I'd like to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order, please. Okay. This evening we have with us from our elementary and middle school members of our Blue Buddy Program who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and they are also our True Blue Moment tonight. So at this time if Mrs. Bartels and Mrs. Gibson could please come up to the front with their students, we will introduce them and they'll lead us in the pledge. You guys turn around and face the audience and I'm going to introduce everyone so when I say your name if you just give a wave so everyone out there knows who you are. From Mrs. Gibson's Blue Buddies from Lee we have Morgan Moore, Kobe Byrd, and Mason Pierce. And we have Mrs. Ashley Gibson. From the middle school we have Mrs. Kyle Bartels. We have Jalen Amdar, Madison Schultz, Carson Gray, Christopher Swinski, and Skylar Schwartz. Excellent. So at this time if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent job. Okay, next we have our mission statement. Sarah?
At Richmond Community Schools we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I'll do roll call. Chris?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
David?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am here. We have four.
Thank you. Next is to approve the agenda. Just want to move item 13, closed session for negotiations. We're going to move that down and make it item 15. Then action items will be 13, closed session for attorney-client communication will be 14, and then adjournment will remain as 16. So I'm looking for motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing non-nominals in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of consent agenda items. Ryan?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have in packet the official resignation from James Bishop as one of the co-football coaches at the high school. He took a position in another district as far as our personnel report.
Okay. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing non-nominals in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, our True Blue Moment. We have the Blue Buddy Program from the middle school and elementary and this is a time every meeting where we like to showcase great things that are going on in our district. And this evening we are lucky enough to have Mrs. Bartels and Mrs. Gibson and their students. So if you guys want to come back up, you can come right up by the podium if you want where the microphone is.
Okay, well, I'll start by explaining what the...
Hold on, hold on, I have to open the microphone.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just not close enough to it. Okay, hopefully this is working better now. So I'll start by explaining what the Blue Buddy Program is. The Blue Buddy Program is a mentorship program where between the NJHS and some of the kids at the Lee School, what it is supposed to accomplish is that we go to the elementary school and it's supposed to establish a bond between us and the students of the Lee Elementary and a mutual learning environment where we perhaps can teach them some things and perhaps we can learn from the experience of teaching them as well. We usually go there twice a month, two Tuesdays a month. We help them with classroom work. Sometimes we will go there and provide a lesson that we have planned ahead of time. One such activity was a activity called, where it was based off of a book, which the book was called How Full Is Your Bucket? And what that lesson explained was how their actions can affect how other people feel and things like that and how you're supposed to encourage... Ah, I'm sorry, I messed with this. I'm glancing at the speech and trying to say it as well. Messed with this, I'm all over the place. But what that lesson was supposed to show was, it was supposed to encourage them to have positive behavior and try to make people feel better rather than negative and make people feel worse about themselves. It was to encourage positive actions and just to let them know how their actions affect I believe it is a worthwhile program. I truly appreciate the program. I feel like it helps me build public speaking skills, being able to speak to a class, obviously a skill I'm exercising currently. Probably still failing at it, but it's all right, I'm trying here. And I do believe that it helps them as well. They seem to enjoy it as much as I do and I believe it is a worthwhile experience for both the middle school students and the elementary school students. I believe that is all I had to say about that. Correct, Miss.
Hello, my name is Ashley Gibson. I teach kindergarten here at Richmond Community Schools. I'm just going to speak really quickly about the experience that we've had in my classroom with our Blue Buddies who we call in my room our Tuesday Friends. When they first entered our classroom, they immediately took to the kindergarteners and began helping with various things in the classroom such as helping students with an assignment, reading to the class, or even just walking around and helping the students stay on task. When they walk in my room each Tuesday, I don't have to stop my lesson to give them directions or what to do or where to go. They just kind of hop right in, they walk around, they help the students when and where needed. Sometimes our Tuesday Friends even join us out for recess. They play games with the kindergarteners, building their social skills, and they even taught a lesson to the class on being a bucket filler, which means being a good friend and making good positive choices. The students in my room really look forward to the Tuesday dates that our Blue Buddies join our classroom and they are really great role models for the students at Lee Elementary. And I've got three of my friends here from my classroom and I'm going to ask them a question about our Blue Buddies. So this is Mason. And Mason, what is your favorite thing about our Tuesday Friends?
Well, they help us do papers.
So they walk around and they help you get your work done? Okay. And this is Morgan. And Morgan, what is your favorite thing about our Tuesday Friends?
That they play with you.
They play with you. And this is Kobe. And Kobe, what have you learned from our Tuesday Friends?
Um, I don't know.
What did you say that we taught you?
Um, how to play tag nicely.
And our Tuesday Friends are Madison, Carson, and Jalen who we've met earlier. So we really enjoy the program.
Mrs. Gibson, can we just ask, how long have you been doing this? The first year you come in? This is first year? Excellent. And are they all eighth graders?
Yep.
Excellent. Good job. That's really cool. Good for you. Thank you. First, we have our 2016-17 Teacher of the Year nominees and recipients.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce the nominees who were nominated either by their colleagues, parents, or students across the district as being one of Richmond's finest teachers, the best of the best. And this was no easy task in terms of picking a teacher that was going to represent Richmond Community Schools at last week's countywide Outstanding Teacher of the Year Awards Dinner. My colleagues from the administration, Ms. Michonne, Mr. Reinhardt, Mr. Bartels, Mrs. Borwick, Mr. Koshin, Mrs. Napier, Mr. Berkmeier, and Mrs. Metaszewski, took the nominations and looked at them and really looked at what the qualities are and it was a very difficult task. If you look at the rubric that's used from the ISD, it is very challenging. And to have this many nominees fit that criteria is pretty impressive. And I know there's many more out there, but one of the challenges we have in education is we don't toot our own horn enough because we have some outstanding teachers here. So tonight I'd like to first recognize the nominees. So when I call your name, if you come up, we have a certificate of appreciation for you. If you come up and just stand in front of the table and then board members, I'll give you a chance to walk around and then we will introduce our three winners for the district. We actually have a little twist this year, who's going to introduce those three winners. So I will begin with, in no particular order, just the way they happen to be on my desk, that's sort of... Just to recognize those that were not able to be here, we have Ms. Kristy Lastbrook, Ed Delore, Dr. Mark Lad, Mike Rineer, Molly Shack, Krista Brown, Kathy Campo, Matt Clendenon, and Julie Zavonic. So I want to give them a round of applause too. You can have a seat if you want. You can have a seat because the next one's going to be a little bit longer, the process. So thank you again. We have some, it was a very difficult decision trying to choose just one from each level because there's so many outstanding teachers. Tonight, we're going to recognize our three winners that were recognized previously in the district as well as at last Thursday's Teacher of the Year Dinner. You may have heard the song, a lot of people have, "What a Wonderful World" by Louis Armstrong. There's a new book that's out, relatively new, that I've recently, and each of our winners will receive this. But if you read the words to the book and really the song, it really articulates and really summarizes what our teachers do every day to our students and the impact that they have making the world that our kids experience a wonderful world. So we have this book copy for our three winners. So to begin tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. Koshin and we have some students that are going to introduce our three winners from the Teacher of the Year. So Mr. Koshin.
I'm going to save a lot of time. There's a lot of things you can always say about the wonderful teachers, all the great things they do each day. But at this time, because I know everybody's more interested to hear from a student than from me, so I'd like to introduce Faith Thompson. Come on up, please. Faith is a fourth grade student in Mrs. Worth's class. So Faith, come on up.
Hello, my name is Faith. I told Miss Worth I was here for the Blue Buddies, but I'm really here to talk about her. I would like to tell you a couple of things that makes her a great teacher. Number one, she always starts her school day with a smile and a good morning. Number two, she is always patient and kind, even when we, her students, aren't so patient and kind to her. Number three, there have been times throughout this school year that me or my classmates have had rough days. Miss Worth has always been there to give us a hug and reassure us that it will be okay. When I found out in the summer that Miss Worth was my fourth grade teacher, I was excited because of her past students talk about what a wonderful teacher she was. Now I know what they were talking about. I know I am speaking for all of her students, past and present. When I say that we were the lucky ones, lucky because we can say we were taught by one of the best. I am so happy that Miss Worth was chosen as Teacher of the Year because she truly is. And I am so honored to be up here tonight to be able to tell you her congratulations and to say thank you for all that she has given. Tonight we get to celebrate and support you like you have done for your students throughout the years. Thank you.
Would you two like to stand over here? Mr. Koshin, you want to join me? All right, next I'll introduce Mr. Bartels for the middle school. At this time I'd like to introduce our student speaker and that's going to be Skylar Schwartz.
Hello, my name is Skylar Schwartz. I am in Mrs. Davidson's class. I have Carson and Chris with me who are also in her class. So I have a lot of words, so be ready and sit back and enjoy the show. If you go to Richmond Middle School, you may see Mrs. Davidson just as a regular art or algebra teacher. But the ones who see her bright smile every day see differently. They see a role model who they ask for advice and questions. But Mrs. Davidson doesn't just give an ordinary answer. She puts thought and kindness into it. She guides her students into the right direction and never gives up on them. Even if it's a difficult challenge, she discovers a solution. She's highly patient and is always listening to each word carefully. She was always there for the student and stays by their side until the end. Mrs. Davidson is honest to her students and tells them what they're doing wrong, not in a crude way, but in a gentle informing way so students themselves can become better. She equally spends time with each student, always finding something incredible about them. She recognizes talent before the student realizes it themselves and leads them to the right path. Even if the student knows her capability, she brings more to the plate and challenges them. In her classroom, there's never a dull moment. There's always joy and laughter in the atmosphere. She makes the tasks enjoyable while still educating her students beyond expectation. Mrs. Davidson is a bright, brilliant, intelligent teacher who goes above and beyond every single day to remind students that they are more than they tell themselves. She is one of the most influential teachers that the Richmond Public Schools have been gifted with. She has shaped her students' lives more than an artist could shape, including mine. She has showed me that I am an artist and often compared myself to my other classmates if I have my own style like everyone else has their own too. She has not only become an amazing teacher, but an amazing friend. I'm honored to be a student of hers and that my eighth grade year was a blast with her. I'm beyond ecstatic that she's the Teacher of the Year because she deserves it and in
Finally, I'll introduce Ms. Michonne to talk about our high school Teacher of the
Good evening. I actually have several students who would like to talk about Mrs. Belf. We have Jessica Weaver, I have Jared Gill, and I can't think of our soccer name. Emma... Michaela. Thank you. Sorry. If you guys would come on forward, please.
Hi, I'm Jessica Weaver. So the middle schoolers and elementary schoolers both use better Bo-Kip words than me, but this came from the heart. So, Miss Belf has gone above and beyond to push me and all of her other students to be the best we can be. She encourages us to express our unique ideas through each project while always voicing our honest opinion. I admire the way she can critique our artwork in the sweetest way so we get the idea without feeling the slightest bit discouraged. Miss Belf finds the time for each individual student, which honestly blows my mind. My freshman year, I had her for drawing one, but during the same class period, she also had drawing two, drawing three, and drawing four. And she still found time for all of us, like every individual student. She found time to come up to us, see what we were doing, see what we wanted to do with our project, and help us out. Besides her ability to flawlessly do a million things at once, I admire how much she genuinely cares about all of her students. Miss Belf is always willing to listen to us talk about anything on her minds. She's an adult that I feel I can confide in and she has helped me blossom as an art student. I can never thank her enough for being such a great teacher and a wonderful person in general.
Ever since I was a kid, I really only had two passions, art and soccer. But for the longest time, I just kind of felt like art wasn't something that was viable. And then Belf came to Richmond. And from the first project, I felt like she really believed in me. And you know, unlike when you're in middle school and a lot of it is just encouragement, you're not really sure of yourself, I really felt that I was achieving something with Miss Belf's class. And she was really the first person, the first teacher to open scholastics to all of her students. And over the last few years, I've watched myself and the young artists around me develop their very own styles and portfolios. And it's really just mind-blowing because in years prior, that just wasn't something that we saw coming out of our school. How many scholastics did we win this year, Miss Belf? Forty-something?
More than anybody.
More than anybody in any district. So I just think that's really impressive. But more than just being an amazing teacher, Belf is a great friend. Ask any student who's ever taken her class. And it really shows in her commitment to her students and her commitment to the school. You know, she's only been here for a short while, but I feel like she's made our school much stronger and she's really added to the heart of everything that we do here. So thank you, Miss Belf. Grab everything.
Pressure is on, okay. I didn't write a lot, but I feel like it doesn't take a lot to say what I mean. I've had the privilege of having Miss Belf as my art teacher for the past three years. When I first began in her Photo One class, I had no idea what I was doing, didn't know how to work a camera, didn't know anything about art. But she saw potential in me and pushed me to do my very best and has done that every single year since then. She had confidence in me when I didn't have it in myself and when I didn't think I was capable of any traditional artwork, she pushed me to try it and I'm now pursuing an art degree in graphic design this fall because she taught me I can do whatever I set my mind to. She has shown me that art is a world and we need it to thrive and advance. Her classes let me grow exponentially as a student, artist, and a person. You can tell Miss Belf truly cares about her students as she goes out of her way to make sure we are not only doing well in the classroom, but outside of the classroom as well. We are able to go to her with our problems and that's a quality of a teacher who deserves Teacher of the Year. Miss Belf has taught me a lot of things about art and life over these past three years, but most importantly, she has taught me to never stop creating.
The stories you heard tonight are just a small example of the stories you'll hear from about every teacher in this district. So I want to congratulate the three winners tonight, every nominee. I think the most important part of this whole process was our colleagues, the colleagues here know how great they are, but when you make an impact on a student's life, that's priceless. So congratulations again. Thank you.
You know, that is good stuff. No greater honor than a student saying great words about their teacher, truly. Russ is going to be boring.
I know.
Okay, next, our buzzer presentation.
We have been talking for several weeks now about the budget. And the sheet that you have in front of you should look very familiar to you and the listening audience. And some of the conversations we've been having about how do we adjust the budget or right-size the organization with a projected decline in student enrollment. The items in gray on your sheet are items that we have previously discussed. And though nothing has been approved by the board, you know, it kind of gave us some direction in terms of where we need to look and try to resolve it. The last couple items on that sheet to discuss are 219. And as you can see on this sheet, there is at this point, I do not have any recommendations to reduce anything without affecting programs. So, when we get into the budget detail tonight, and I explain that process, that's where our conversation is going to go. But at that point, and 219 is called Other People's Support Services. It's primarily our Schedule B scholasks. It's the National Honor Society, it's the clubs, the organizations that fall within non-athletics on Schedule B. The other aspect, as you roll down, or scroll down to the second page, is athletics. And looking at the athletic budget, unless we're going to reduce programs, there is no recommendation that we have any extra dollars or dollars in that account. So, you're going to see I have those line items zeroed out on this particular one. So, when we look at our budget total, this totals, if the board were to approve this budget as presented, $288,000 and $241 in roughly reduction, estimated reduction costs. I want to refer again to that column F and column G. Column F was what we started in January, if we assume no per pupil increase. Column G is $100 per pupil increase. All three of the budgets that have been released call for at least $100 per pupil increase. Though until the budget's signed, we don't know what the final dollar amount, but... So, if we look at the grand total, this would require us, at this point, making some assumptions. Some costs remain the same and so forth, which we haven't taken into consideration. Still short $155,000 just to address a structural problem. Again, this does not take into consideration if the hard cap increases, water rates increase, electricity increase, stuff like that. So, this was our starting point. So, at this point, we have gone through all of the function codes in big picture, that 30,000 foot. So, tonight, what I'd like to next present is... I'm going to call it projected revenue. And this is really where we start, when we start looking at the budget. And again, all of these are fluid because we're now at a point where the business manager, Vicki and I, sit down and say, okay, which of these items are realistic to assume that we can carry over? And so, what you have in front of you is, at the very top, that column F is our current February 27, 2017 budget amendment. Column E, the E did not show up, I apologize, rolls over some of those dollars. So, you have our income, our revenue, about 2.6 million from property tax. You have revenue from payments and interest on taxes, which we budgeted about $4,000. We have approximate tuition for summer school programs, about $3,000. Transportation fees, which is the $15,000. This is primarily when we charge for field trips. That money goes to pay for the, it's a revenue source. And then you'll see it offset in the expense line item for the field trip drivers. Investment on earnings, we do not have any. Emissions and gate receipts, currently we have budgeted $70,000 that we receive in gate receipts throughout the whole school year. Obviously, as our teams do well and they participate more tournaments and games, that increases our gate receipt revenue. Pay to participate, we currently have budgeted $60,000. And what you're going to see here is a rough estimate of current enrollment numbers. Again, it may have fluctuated and changed as students add and drop, times the pay-to-participate fee. And there are some activities that all the, like for instance, seventh and eighth grade girls, cheerleading might be all in this 14 number rather than broken down. You'll also see on here, as you keep going down by sport, you'll see reduced lunch credit we have for those parents that do not pay the full amount but pay a reduced amount. They're listed as a line item. On here, as it's not a revenue, we're actually giving, reducing what revenue we would have anticipated bringing in. You'll also see on here, fall work offs. On our website, we identify the work offs that the district will pay to help parents offset that fee. So, we budget approximately $9,000 in money that we're going to actually give back based on work offs. And a lot of those are critical to have a sport operate, whether it's a gate sale or chains or scorekeeping. As you continue scrolling down, again, these are our starting points. And as Vicki and I start looking at what's the trend this year and start finalizing some of this, we may recommend making some adjustments or not assuming that much based on patterns. If our enrollment in sports is down, you may not have enough family members attending the event because we have less students, and so that affects your gate. There's multiple aspects. Childcare fees, we bring in about $60,000 in childcare fees. That's our before and after-school latch key. Preschool fees, we bring in about $69,000 in preschool fees. And so forth, that's our community service. Currently, we have budgeted for the rentals. We have several groups, and the list here just lists groups that have utilized our facilities. Some use them yearly and annually, some use them sporadically. But we budget about $4,500 in rental fees for the facility. That revenue goes into the general fund revenue. And we then, based on our use of facilities, we may have an expense on the expense side. It might be the lighting, the heating, the cooling. It might be repairs for facilities that are being used and need to be done. So, that money doesn't necessarily go directly for that. It goes into the general fund revenue. Then as a board, you divvy up how you want to expend those funds. We have shared time services with our mechanic that we pay. He's our employee, but we reimburse through New Haven. So, you'll see that expense line item should be incoming revenue equals existing expenses. There are several other local revenues that we might get for shared services, a variety of aspects. You'll see then, on the next section, 311, which is unrestricted state revenue, you'll see if we roll over our current state revenue. And then you'll see the line item here in $276,000 in projected loss gain of students. That's assuming a $100 increase. That's that formula that equates to about $276,000 in lost revenue going into next year on top of our current structural problem. You'll see MIPS' offset cost, ULA payment, that's the payment. Our retirement cost is roughly at 36%. The state issues a check. We then turn around and pay the state back that check, which drops our retirement down to about 24%. So, that's our, it's about 11.7%. The items that you'll see in red listed here, whether it's 31A, robotics, early literacy target, these are grants that we have applied for or are formula grants that, based on free reduced lunch, we get. And then when you get to the itemized budget detail, you'll see red lines in that budget. All the red lines zero out. So, if I zero out this $36,000, I'll just use this for an example. I'm going to go into the expense and zero out those red lines that equate to that grant. So, it just kind of gives you a visual of, we really don't have discretion on those dollars. There's a specific use for them, and our expenses have to equal the revenue that we're receiving. Some of the grants that we've gotten, our financial analytic tools that the state has given, we've gotten our 31A funding. We expanded the robotics, and we've got some grant funds for the elementary and the middle and the high school robotics program. Just to put a plug, we're still looking for a middle school advisor for the robotics. So, if someone's interested, contact me. GSRP, GSRP carryover. Again, you'll see some of those dollars will, are rolled over. So, like for instance, I'll just use GSRP. As we closer to the budget cycle, we'll see how much money do we have left this year? And is it enough? We may not have anything left, and that would be zeroed out. But then all the expenses that go with that would be also zeroed out. You'll see IDA, IDA preschool, carryover, Title I, Title II, Perkins Grant. Services provided to other schools, we get some reimbursement. We have, because of the IAM teacher, that's a Richmond teacher teaching at the IAM. We get some money in return because of the tuition payments that we would pay and the teacher costs. So, we actually get some refunds sent back to the district.
And that's if that amount is done, that's...
It's in there. I will get you the details on that with that specific 23. I'm not 100% sure on that one. But our total revenue is $13,377,000. So, in essence, you can see right here below, we are projected at $258,000 less revenue next year than we have this year. Now, that's a little different than the 276 because one of the conversations that we're going to need to have is what assumption do we want to make on pay-to-participate? Because we've been budgeting about 60. If the numbers hold true and the reduced lunch holds true, again, those are estimates because I don't necessarily, I don't know who's going to be on, I don't know who's going to be on the team next year. We may want to be conservative and bring it back down to 60 and see how the dust settles and amend that at the February audit next year. But basically, we have about $13 million in revenue. And the difference between this column over here, why you see the increase? Because we applied for a lot of our carryovers and we got our final allocation. So, we had additional revenue, but you're also going to see those expenses go up on that expense side. So, that gives you our starting point for the revenue side. Any questions so far? Now, the next document is quite lengthy, and I don't, I'm not intending necessarily to, but I will, it can go as many questions as needed. But I wanted to give you at least a starting point. It's the budget detail. And this gives you basically the explanation of all costs associated with an expense line item. It gives you a description to base it on. So, and I'll just, we'll start with this one here. And I am going to do my best to increase this, but I want to walk you through. I'm going to minimize this right now just to give you a visual because I don't necessarily want to assume a name on here. Because you're going to see in this document, people's names, salaries, everything about them, total cost. So, for instance, if you look at that first page, you're going to see some items that are highlighted in red. Those are assumptions. If we assume we are continuing with the reduced elementary specials model, one less teacher at the elementary school, that would affect the specials. Well, that allocation, this column D, is the projected FTE for next year. You'll see it's a different number than the number that's in E, which is the current allocation. Okay? And again, I don't want to have anybody assume here that's the person that's affected. It is a domino effect when we get to that point. But there is an assumption on this one that at the elementary school, there is a teacher that's reduced based on it. The number that I have arbitrarily picked is the lowest senior teacher in that building. That does not mean that teacher's going to be the one laid off because if they have higher seniority and seniority plays, they may be reassigned to a building. So, you're going to see as you go through, you'll see all the payroll. You will see the longevity. I'm going to now enlarge it a little. You will see disability insurance, what that cost is. If the individual is taking that insurance, they may be taking PAC-A or PAC-B. And it's by teacher, by administrator, by secretary. The cost for accidental death and dismemberment. You will see, you'll see healthcare costs. You will see dental insurance and so forth. The first section is all Function 111, which there are several pages. As you continue down, the blue item, as you see, this light blue bar that runs across... Those are the actual account numbers. And below that are the items that, in general, you charge to that account. As you keep scrolling down, you will eventually get to Function 112, which is the second responsibility code. You'll see in here, excuse me, I'll just go back to, you'll see in 111, you'll see substitute costs. You will see what we budgeted for workshops, copiers, the fee we paid per copy collector. You will see teaching supplies. You will see consumables. You will see textbook replacements. And then you'll see a dark blue line, which is the next function code, middle school. And again, it goes through the same format. Salary. There's currently a suspension in longevity, so they're zeroed. You'll see overage payments calculations, school improvement, life insurance, et cetera. And as you keep going through. Any questions on reading this at this point? So, my hope is the 30,000-foot discussion that we've had now brings you down towards what is the details of the budget. So, you can see as we can have the conversation about, you know, as we start looking for any other dollars here and there. I do want to point out, as you keep scrolling through, and I'm going to just scroll down to any random page, you're going to see, again, if it's in the FTE column and it's red, that's an assumption we're making at this point in terms of a staff reduction. I have no idea what that reduction is at this point or who that staff member will be affected. As you keep scrolling, I want to point out, you're going to get to some bright red line. These are the, these are the grant accounts. Anywhere there is a red line, we really, we don't have discretion to reduce that account because that is tied to the grants on the revenue side. So, if we're reducing the revenue, then we're going to reduce one of these line items. In this particular one, I think this is preschool. You'll see color codes so that you can see this orange is related to this orange, it's related to this. It all builds. So, as we're running scenarios, we can see what the effect on the budget is. So, you're going to go through, like all the function codes, you'll see this one has quite a few. This is probably a lot of GSRP grant, which falls in the preschool. You get into 120, 125, paraprofessionals for Title I. And again, if anybody needs any descriptions on what the function codes is, I'll be more than happy to provide it or Vicki would, and so forth. So, as you keep going down, you'll see the red, those are all grant. You'll see in here our custodial contracts. You'll see media specialists in here, secretaries, administrators. What this doesn't take into consideration, if there's any payouts. For instance, we may have an individual that receives 10 vacation days. And at the end of the contract, if they don't use them, they get paid out. The assumption on this is that they are utilizing those days throughout the year. And if not, then when we get to the final amendments in June, you'll see that payout. The other assumption right now is I estimated the hard cap for the healthcare to be a 3% increase over the current hard cap. I did not put for those individuals that are on Blue Cross Blue Shield. I did not put their current rates in there, but I will be putting them. So, my plan is every week to bring you this. If you want it printed, I'll be more than happy to print it. Otherwise, I'll put it online for you so you can see through. You'll see on the left column, there's always a number in that column. So, if you have a particular question about a row number, that's typically how we reference it. Again, if you go down to the very last page, you will see... You'll see this stuff in the athletic page. These are, you'll see two sections. Sometimes they're, I'll just use this as an example here. You'll see if they are a PCMI employee, a third party, or a district. So, for instance, in this case, in fall sport, this is a salary. So, the seventh grade basketball coach's position would not show it, that's why it's zero. But when you go down to the contracted services account, you'll see there's a 1... But when you go down to the contracted services account, you'll see there's a 1 there because he would be accounted for there. But if you go down to the very end of the. You will see. So this gives you an idea on the details of what goes into every account. So now we can have some more conversation at the next board meeting on what are ideas? If there's, you know, the conversation is really going to entail bringing in the impact of the administrative team in terms of if we do X, what's that going to do to the building's procedural operation, ability to, to run the, the programs that we have there? Questions? A lot to take in. Like I said, I will, if you want to print a copy each week, I will be more than happy to print one for you. Otherwise, I'll, there will be an updated, one as we have the conversation each week, we'll update the numbers and dollars. But my hope is in June, when you approve the budget, we know exactly where every dollar is being spent. So there's, and what assumptions we have made. So I would encourage you, as you look through this, in the nice weather, maybe you're sitting on your patio looking through this and enjoying the weather. If you have any questions about a specific area, call me, shoot me an email. I will, I will be more than happy to sit down with you and go over it with you and just discuss it with you. Okay? That's all I have.
Next, Haley.
As always, I begin my report with the elementary school. Students and staff enjoyed a Super U Challenge Assembly last Friday. And what that was, the students got to participate in game show type activities to reinforce trust, teamwork and respect. Sort of team building activities there. Camo sheets from March 3rd month that we heard about. Where the kids were about to go, they got to fill out a thing, another type of bingo sheet square. They get awarded with a lunch with Mr. Cochran this Thursday and Friday. And there will be a change wars assembly, May 24th, at the elementary school to raise money for both the parent group and the student council. The middle school, actually, I haven't been here since March's reading month. So I wanted to comment on the Read-a-Thon. I got to be a part of that, so thanks to the middle school for letting me come and be a part of that. I got to watch their volleyball game that they got to participate in. And it was a lot of fun over there. I had the opportunity to perform my storytelling piece and that was a lot of fun, so thank you. The sixth grade choir attends states tomorrow in Marysville. Morning with moms, sort of like the dads event that the middle school holds where students get to bring their mothers into school before school and just have a little celebration. That'll be the Friday of Mother's Day weekend. Thursday, the Richmond Middle School Student Government will perform their annual Historical Society cleanup. And also, the middle school has their first track meet this Thursday, or Thursday, the 27th, home. So, and that leads me into the high school. Both the middle school and the high school groups, such as the National Junior Honor Society, their student government, and then our student government and our National Honor Society are prepping for Teacher Appreciation Week coming up here. The high school musical was this last weekend. We were able to do a preview show for the students on Friday, so that was a really good opportunity. Our theater competition, forensics team, we attend states this Friday and Saturday at Eastern Michigan University. And all six members of the team made it to state, so we'll all be attending.
For first year?
That's excellent. For sure. Our women's carale will also be attending states tomorrow at Marysville. Where actually, we get to share the bus with the sixth grade choir, so that'll be a lot of fun. I'm sure we'll have some singles.
That's great.
Our prom is planned for May 5th, and that'll be at Alexander's in Marysville. So our student government's working hard right now to get that ready. Our theme is Hollywood. I actually, when you bought your ticket, we got little keychains that looked like tickets. I have mine here with me, so it's pretty cool. It says Richmond Prom Hollywood. We have a blood drive on May 8th here at the high school. Last Friday, four students had the opportunity to attend Richmond area's elected officials breakfast. We had Rachel Tavano, who is the freshman class president. Emma Shaldrin, who's the sophomore class president, myself and Autumn Ward, and we are co-junior class presidents. So we got to go to this breakfast with Mr. Wamsley and Mr. Worth. And we got to hear a lot of the elected officials speak. And that was really neat, that was a really neat experience for us, so thank you. The forensics class here is currently in the process of trying to solve their annual murder. I actually believe Ms. Duff was the murderer. Yes. So they're going around fingerprinting, getting hand. Yeah, I know. Yes, they're going around testing everything and everyone, questioning like blood stuff, like handwriting samples. Nobody's safe. Everyone gets questioned all the time. We have a track meet home tomorrow at 4:30, I believe. Our varsity baseball team, they won their tournament in North Branch this weekend. Both the JV and varsity softball teams played well this past weekend against Romeo. I know our varsity girls split their doubleheader. Richmond Golf, too, they took second at their tournament last Friday in Alma. So we're on a roll. And that concludes my report. Unfortunately, there's no question because everybody's so busy. So I'll just put in an announcement.
That's very good. Thank you, Haley.
Yes.
Next, Brian.
I just want to echo, I had a chance to go to the performance last, it was our Saturday night. It gives you goosebumps seeing the talent that we have and the voices on some of the students. It was just unbelievable. So I know they will do well at, at competition, so. I'm going to start with, at the last board, we had a question regarding some funding sources. So I asked Vicky to put together kind of an explanation of that. In your packet, you'll see three documents. One is a, I think it's 10A2, kind of a written response, kind of from, or it is a written response from Vicky. But I'm going to show you, you want the transparency, the chart, Vicky? That's the one you want?
Yeah, let's start there.
Let's start there, so.
Okay. This is one of the source documents for the presentation that we had, that there was a question about. If you want, if you could scroll down a little bit, please. Just getting, if we can get all the expenditure piece. That's good. That's good right there. So this is the, this is from the budget transparency report that is on our website. And we update it every year as figures change. So this, this is where anyone can go here and get this information. It states that operating expenditures, under that, that category, there's instructional expenditures. And the 1XX, those are what Mr. Wamsley was talking about, the instructional expenditures. All the 100s are instructional expenditures. On this document, though, the 293 is also included in instructional expenditures, and that's athletics. That is not where our board documents or our financial statements puts instructional expenditures. So if you look at 8.5 million is the instructional expenditures with the 293 function code, which is athletics. If you go down to where it says central and other support services, that is normally where we would put 293. It would go with the other 200, 280 and 90 function codes. And that shows 26,336 as the expenditures for that category of central and other support. Now, if you can show the, the. Yes, the second document. This is, I think it's board resolution, if I'm not mistaken. And the second page of that, if we can get that. And the second page of that has the expenditures. So if you can scroll down a little bit. So if you look at that, this is how the budget is presented to the board. Coincides with our financial statements so that they, they match. And it shows that our instructional expenditures, and let me get that number here that adds up, too, because I'm not going to do that math in my head right now. 8.2 million dollars. That includes all the 100 function codes. That does not include the function 293. When we report it and present it to the board, the function 293 is down in that central area. And that's 352,959. And that is the, includes the athletics. So if you took the athletics out of those numbers, you would have the athletics, the central support would be. Yes, 26,000. I'm sorry. I'm trying to look through so many documents. So the discrepancy in that large number that was a percentage increase is based on the fact that the numbers, the functions are placed a little bit differently. The information is in a different place on the two documents. So that is the difference between those, those numbers. Does that explain it? Does that give you a good idea of, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicky.
To, to follow up with that. I am happy to report to the board that as of 6:59 tonight, we have a tentative agreement with the Richmond Education Association. All areas that we've talked about and been discussing have been agreed to. We are now going to meet on Wednesday to get it into one document because we've got papers all over the place on what we've agreed to. Last week, Wednesday, I want to thank not only my administrative team, but the, the leadership of the EA. We spent from roughly 4 o'clock, 4:30 in the evening till almost 1:00 in the morning. Today, we spent from 12 till, if I was running here at the last minute. And everything has been agreed to. So I will be getting that document to you. But we have a tentative agreement with our teachers' union through June of 2019. There is no update on legislative stuff at this point, other than what I've shared with you previously. So that concludes my report.
Next, items of interest for members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
Just wanted to, at our last meeting, real quick, it was mentioned that only one board member attended the budget meeting that was put on by the Education Association. With the way things were, everybody at this table was advised by the mediator and the lawyer not to attend that, that meeting for various reasons. And as a life rule, in my life, I usually tend to take the advice of those who have a specialty field. So speaking for myself, I can't speak for other people at the table as to why they decided. But that was the advice we were given, and that is why I was not at that meeting.
That's why I wasn't there, too. Anybody else? I just want to say I went to the plate as well Friday night. Haley, you're amazing. I always love watching you on the stage. Everyone did a very nice job and it was fun, fun to be there. So, nice job. Please let everyone know in your group that they sure did a good job.
Thanks, thank you for coming and supporting.
Yep.
It's good news that, that week, the SAT, and those three days of testing are over. I'm sure there's lots of folks who are sort of, wait, wait. I would just like to share, though, a conversation that I had with a student of mine who doesn't attend Richmond. But Haley and I have a chance to have a little conversation here before the board meeting. And the student shared a similar story to what Haley shared about the SAT. You know, my student was like, oh, I was prepared, it was good, it was good. I think it was good. And the second day was the work keys test, also in Rochester where I work. And we had interesting conversations with, about that particular assessment. But the one that was most interesting was actually the state test. The third day test. And the student of mine said, you know, I understand, I guess, I guess that that test assesses my teachers and it assesses the school district. And she said, but what I can't figure out is why I was tested over things that I learned two years ago. Because the test was primarily about world history, when in fact, I took that my freshman year. And for me to recall what I learned two years ago was exceptionally difficult for me. And why would anybody test me two years later? Why would anybody test me two years later? That's what the student said. And we had the same conversation.
I can agree with that, yeah.
And so I just found it an interesting conversation. And as we have conversations about assessment and as we have conversation about meaningful assessment that helps us do what we need to do with students. How is it the state puts out an assessment that in fact, doesn't really show potentially what kids know? Doesn't give an adequate depiction of what's happening in classrooms or what's happening in school districts? And yet, that potentially is 50% of what a teacher's evaluation may end up being or an administrator's or that kind of thing. So just was an interesting comment from someone who really had, had gone through the experience about, about that. And kudos to all those educators out there who were sitting there and monitoring for all those days and being a part of that and watching that happen. And Brian, do, I don't know. I, anybody else astounded at the fact that we had someone here from the SAT?
Yeah, we did have an audit the day before the SAT. They basically checked to make sure we followed the protocol. And because we have ceiling tiles in one of our classrooms, we were in, in the, in the secure room. It was found to be a deficiency. Ceiling tiles. Because someone could scale, I guess, the wall and go through the ceiling tiles and steal a test. I don't know. But that was one. There has been reports in other districts. In fact, there was a fifth grader taking a test in Chippewa Valley. As they were going through the M-step, the questions were coming in upside down. So there is still some logistical. You know, it's just, you know, part of your conversation deals with the state's planning and thinking. And last Wednesday, there was a statewide request by school districts to participate in tornado safety awareness drill. And it just happened to be scheduled during the time that we would be taking the M-step test. So Macomb County chose not to participate in that drill. But that's another issue that, that our staff, and I really give it to them because they're the ones that manage this, deal with on a day-to-day basis from the state or a day before, they'll get adjustments in. An error was found, redo this, or it is an ongoing process. And so I give kudos to not only the administrative team and the, the secretaries, the counselors, the teacher, because it's an ongoing issue that we deal with. So those are just some of the issues that, that we're getting.
Yeah, just one for people who make decisions about education and actually ask educators.
I would like to say, too, if I may, that like, I went into the SAT room and I felt completely prepared because of the staff here at Richmond Community Schools. Like honestly, I give so much credit to our teachers and Mrs. Michonne and even all the way back in middle school. Because I know after talking to my peers, too, that, that test was nothing compared to all the preparation we do for it. Like between math minutes and articles of the month. And I know that we roll our eyes at you guys, so I may assume. So I apologize, but it really does. That test was, was nothing.
Good.
So thank you.
Good news for you. You good?
Yep, we're good.
Next, we're going to move on to item 13, action items, approval of MISD fiscal year 2018 budget.
At the last board, you were presenting.
At the last board meeting, you were presented the MISD's budget. Each local district is required to either approve or disapprove for the budget. Hearing no disapproval of it in your board packet is a resolution that we would be submitting to the ISD an approval of their budget. Kyle had gone to the budget hearing and presented an overview of that at the last board meeting, so.
There's a sample resolution?
My motion to accept the recommendation, superintendent approved the fiscal year 2018 Macomb intermediate school district budget, as presented on April 10, 2017, and outlined in the attached documents and resolution.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Other than I will have to abstain from voting because I am a boy of the ISD. So it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next, approval of literacy library materials.
In your packet is a backup regarding the literacy library materials. We began this process of upgrading and enhancing the literacy library that was already started at Lee. One of our goals is to take the existing literacy library and merge them in with our current literacy library. We've done this in now phases. Our first phase was primarily to look at fictional texts and get leveled readers in the hands of, we call them little six-pack books, so a teacher can pull a group of six students at a time at their level. Then we moved on to the phase two, which was getting literature books that correlate with the science kits that they have in there, that were just approved last year. Well, what's before you is phase three, and it primarily focuses on informational texts to provide leveled readers with informational texts. So again, we worked with Toni Hall, who's a literacy consultant, she used to work for Wayne Risa, has been on multiple state endeavors, literacy endeavors throughout the nation. She negotiated several with these companies for us to get us for the value of a significant increase in, if we were to go do it ourselves, a lot of times, we don't have the buying power as a smaller district. So what Toni does is she coordinates with, maybe it's Richmond, a couple other districts to purchase the books to get the large volume buying power. And so it equates to almost $17,000, a little over $17,000 in basically free books that if we didn't have that position. In your packet, you'll see the backups for all the books, as well as a list of all the books. Each one of those books comes in a six-pack, so it's, so the teacher has, and there's all informational, high interest, reading, it ties along with the content the teachers are teaching at grade level, whether it was energy, life science, earth science, whether it's social studies concept, to provide that bridge between what they're learning in the content and the informational literacy. So I respectfully ask for your approval for this purchase.
Okay. There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of literacy library books as listed in the attached documentation for a total not to exceed $43,092.47, which funded from the appropriate 2016-17 Title I grant is authorized and presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, looking for a motion to go into closed session for purposes of attorney-client communication. So moved.
Margaret?
Margaret. Oh, my gosh, I sure did. Okay, hold the phone. I must not have put my glasses on, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, I am very sorry. Public comment. Portion of our meeting where we have, if someone would like to address the board, they may do so. You can come up to the podium, state your name, there should be a card up there. If you have a question that you need answered, you leave your name and phone number, and someone will get back with you. It is not a question-and-answer period, but you have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Nope? Okay. Okay, now, let's get to, we had Sarah made the motion, was it Kyle that second?
Yes.
Okay. It has been moved and supported on the motion to go into closed session for attorney-client communication. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. There you go.